Okay, you guys are all set.
Okay. Good evening, residents, and welcome to the August 1st Select Board meeting. My name's Ron Cohane. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro TV. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon Files and as a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. The recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. After instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. This time, I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ah, yes.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go through and do Board introductions, starting from my far left. Kate.
Morning, or good evening, Kate Federoff, Town Council.
Good evening, Shannon McAndrew, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Eric Eldridge.
Good evening, Katerina Kalabokas.
Selectman Winastrom.
Good evening, Selectman Winastrom.
Matt Hanson, Town Administrator.
Colin Lozelle, Assistant Town Administrator.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is meeting minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen review and approve the regular session meeting minutes for July 11th, 2022.
Second. A motion is second, since we have somebody remote, I have to do a roll call vote. Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Kalabokas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winastrom.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Next on the agenda, Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen review and approve but not release the Executive Session Meeting Minutes for July 11th, 20...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Second. A motion is second, roll call vote. Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Kalabokas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winastrom.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. That passes 5-0-0. Next on the agenda is Executive Session Meeting Minutes again.
I move that the Board of Selectmen review, approve, and release the Executive Session Meeting Minutes for March 14th, 2022, April 11th, 2022, and June 13th, 2022.
Second. A motion is second, roll call vote. Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Kalabokas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winastrom.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. That passes 5-0-0. Next, Citizens of Business Time. Would anybody like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, let's go to the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So pleased to provide the following updates from throughout Town Hall in the town. The Tingsboro Public Library and the Mass Board of Library Trustees welcome the First Lady of the Commonwealth, Lauren Baker, as well as gold medalist Olympian Colleen Coin and Boston Bruins mascot Blades to Tingsboro on July 28th as part of the state's summer reading program. Twenty-one food vendors, in addition to thirteen food trucks and a hundred and four non-food vendors, have signed up for the Tingsboro Block Party on the Bridge. We do want to remind the community that it's scheduled for Saturday, August 27th. It will only be one day, and visit partybythebridge.com if you would like more information. Very pleased to announce that the First Parish Meeting House bell tower scaffolding will be coming down this week. Yay! And the final work inside the bell tower is nearing completion. Wedding was held this past Saturday, and the bride and groom were able to ring the historic Revere Bell at the close of their ceremony, and a really important part of the ceremonies and the selling point of a wedding moving forward. We've added a few photos of the bell to the lobby of the First Parish, so as they're ringing it, people can see exactly what they're ringing. We have a few photos in the TA report, and we're working on a compilation that's going to be going up on the website this week, as well as Roney is working on a video as well. We've talked about that for the First Parish Meeting House to incorporate some more of the information about the renovation project. Ninety-three Kendall Road Warehouse Project officially applied for their MEPA review as of today, and they have a very aggressive timeline with plans to be in front of the Planning Board by the end of the summer or early fall, and they would like to break ground early in the spring next year. As a reminder, the current plan of the shared driveway that they are proposing is included in the TA report here, so it will be one new shared driveway with new driveways for the Tingsboro Park and Ride and the Highway Garage off of the new shared combined driveway. The Town Server Replacement Project was completed last week, and that was funded through the Fiscal 23 Capital Plan. We've put a photo of our new servers here in the TA report. The new car wash at 426 Middlesex, as well as the brewery at 394 Middlesex, have already approached the Sewer Commission to apply for their sewer connections. The Engineering Department is working on the Nipte's MS4 Year Four Annual Report and finalizing a few components that were worked on by our Stormwater Intern, as well as Ty and Bond, our consultants. The Public Safety Building Subcommittee has established its own Subcommittee to review our regional dispatch options. Incorporating dispatch operations from our neighboring community into our new public safety building may result in additional cost savings or offsets from the state. Again, no decisions or recommendations have been made. They're just in the exploration phase at this point, but that Subcommittee will be touring the Tuxbury Regional Communication Center on August 22nd as part of their work. The Expanded Meeting Room Audio-Visual Project, which was funded through ARPA, has been completed, so the 116 Meeting House, the Old Town Hall, and the COA are now equipped to handle public meetings. Although, as Roney will note, not all at the same time we turn on all of those buildings. School Department successfully transitioned to munis payroll, beginning the first payroll of fiscal year '23.
Does anybody have any questions for the Mr. Town Administrator? Just one. Matt.
Selectman Eldridge.
Relative to munis, what's left?
Treasure collector.
That's it.
Almost it.
We're on track. Absolutely. We're on track. Yeah.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Colin.
Thank you. The inspection phase of the Winslow School asbestos evacuation design is complete. The consultants from Peer Group conducted four days of extensive sample collection in the building over the course of the last month. We're waiting on results from the last two days, which took place last week, but the first set of results showed a significantly lower-than-expected amount of asbestos-containing samples. We expect to get the final results later this week or early next week, and then we'll move into the bid-doc design phase. The Bicentennial Field Project Design Phase is moving along. All of the required site visits and surveys have been completed. The consultants with Irrigation Consultants will now work with that data to identify a system that will work in a specific environment and will meet applicable local and state environmental regulations. They did send late last week a preliminary pump station design and mainline routing to get some initial feedback from our Conservation Commission, and once they identify the components of the system, they'll apply the necessary applications before the Conservation Commission. Currently seeking sale bids for the Highway Services and Materials contract. This project seized the award of multiple contracts for various highway-related services and materials. We typically award them annually with the option to extend this board renewed contract or issued contracts last year, but due to the current market, most of the vendors weren't willing to hold their FY22 pricing. Bids are due on Wednesday for that. And the roof project for this building in the library is largely complete. They've got a few more areas on this side of the building to touch up before finishing some finish work, so I do apologize if you hear a few more loud bangs before this meeting ends. We lost a day last week to weather, and we're trying to keep a pretty stringent schedule.
Tight ship, huh, Colin?
Yes.
Any questions for Colin? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you very much. Great report, you two. Next is a public hearing. This public hearing, we're going to open the public hearing, and we're going to see if there's any comments from the residents, and then we're actually going to vote on it at our next meeting. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second. I have a motion is second, roll call vote. Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Kalabokas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winastrom.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So now I'm going to open up to the residents. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this? Seeing none. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Second. A motion is second, roll call vote. Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Kalabokas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winastrom.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So at our next meeting, we will go and vote on this. We've had a public hearing for this meeting. Matt, do you have anything else to add?
Even though we'll vote when we have the final copy at the next meeting, Roney can give us a very brief overview of the main points of the new agreement, which is very, very similar to the previous agreement, but he did come this evening if he could just quickly go through those for your benefit.
I didn't realize you were doing this. Go ahead, Roney. You've got the floor there, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, Roney Camille, Media Director. We just heard back from Cable Council, not Town Council, sorry, Council, and our agreement with Verizon is a pretty standard...well, not standard. It's gone for five years. One of the highlights is that the PEG access support will go up from about...actually, no, the capital from 10,000 per year to about...I'm sorry, 7,500 a year to up to 10,000, so for a total of $50,000 for the next five years, and will be granted a one high-definition PEG channel available 180 days after we sign the agreement. So those are the high-level things that Cable Council viewing is working on our behalf with Verizon, and this would bring us in lockstep with Comcast, I think in 2020...hold on, so this is '22. Next, we're up for Comcast renewal in '24, so we would, you know, negotiate so that the two contracts would kind of be in line with each other. That way, we're not doing with one contract one year and another contract the next year. But as I said before in the past, I don't have a magic crystal ball. I can't predict what these cable companies will do five or 10 years from now at, you know, with what's happening with the industry and technology evolving. So that is what I can offer you at this time. I yield my time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Selectman Eldridge. Mr. Chair, thank you. So just to confirm, what we're talking about is this would be a five-year agreement with Verizon, then in '24, we would negotiate a three-year agreement with Comcast potentially sit there co-terminus? Is that what I heard?
Yes. Not to give our strategy to Comcast now, but yes, that would be...yes.
We'll try, yeah.
We'll try.
And as you noted, right now, we're sticking with a 3%, but we're keeping the language in there that if we negotiated something different with Comcast, if we decided to increase it, they'll both honor the other's contract. So we could go up to four or five if we wanted to, but we're not making any requests or changes at this time.
Correct.
Does that apply if it goes down? I'm only kidding.
Yeah. I would hope that it would not go down.
Yeah. I didn't think so. Okay. Any other questions for the Board?
I don't want to get into that.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add, Roney?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. That's the Verizon. Next on the list, review status of cannabis host community agreement with MJ's Market. So at this time, I'd like to ask MJ's Market to come up and address the Board.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. We appreciate you taking the time under short notice. My name is Heath Gaffney. Brian Foley, we're co-founders of MJ's Market, and Brian has all the good stuff.
Yeah, it's good to see you all. I hope to be here asking for a delivery license. We're still not there yet. Been meeting with a lot of you since 2018, if you can believe it, so some new faces. So as he said, I'm the co-founder.
Can you put the mic a little bit closer?
Oh, is that better?
Yeah, very much so. Thank you very much.
Again, I'm the co-founder, and what we want to do is give you an update on what has been going on with us since last spring, when you all issued us the host community agreement for the second retail license. So, and then we have an ongoing lawsuit with the other group that is under Juicy. I will use that term interchangeably with Nature's Remedy, as they are the overall business. So this took about eight minutes in the mirror, so I'll be as quick as I can, and then hopefully we can have some positive discussion. So last November, Juicy filed a lawsuit in Massachusetts Superior Court against the Tingsboro Select Board, the Planning Board, the ZBA, and MJ's Market. This filing was concurrent with the expiration of the 20-day special permit appeal period to deliver MJ's Market its special permit. So I went to get the special permit. I wasn't given it. Here's your lawsuit. So these actions have gravely damaged MJ's prospects of success at 405-409 Middlesex with nine months of lawsuits delay so far. To date, we've invested over $250,000 in our venture at this address with no ability to recoup these investments. We remain committed to the project and the town of Tingsboro. We do need to protect our ability to open at 405-409, and we are absolutely not looking to undo all of that work. This project's shovel-ready with stamped plans. Per our attorneys, I have this update on the lawsuit. Our discovery...we have an expedited track with the court. Our discovery closed last Friday. I have a deposition with their attorneys on Thursday. Maybe I should schedule a root canal for Friday, you know? Expert disclosures, traffic experts from Juicy are due on the end of this month, August 31st, and then we can do a rebuttal traffic study on September 30th. Finally, we challenge the standing after completing the exchange of expert reports. In the middle of all this, the warehouse development proposed for the site across from our development has begun its special permitting process with the Planning Board. It appears that Juicy is a willing partner with this project, as a key component of it includes a shared driveway with Nature's Remedy. The traffic analysis presented to support this new project includes the MJ's Market store development and, in fact, proposes a new signalized intersection with our site. This traffic analysis clearly supports the fact that our project presents no traffic issues and that Juicy's lawsuit against us has no merit based on traffic concerns. The 406 proposed warehouse traffic study is already approved by the Mass Department of Transportation. We plan on discussing this traffic analysis with Juicy counsel as it flies in the face of their appeal claiming a traffic impacts. It would be helpful to have the town join us in this conversation. While we are confident that we will prevail in getting the appeal dismissed, we feel it's prudent to consider contingencies for the remote chance that we are not successful, including finding a possible second location for the retail shop. Any contingency needs to be done with the full support and input of the town. We are here to get the Board's initial thinking on this. We are obliged to mitigate our risk of not being able to obtain a special permit due to this lawsuit. With the lawsuit dropped, we could begin permitting for demo and build in August, this month, at 405-409 Middlesex. Without the lawsuit dropped, a judgment may not be made by Mass Superior Court until November, and the court could vote in favor of Juicy. Then we would be forced to move as a state provisional retail cannabis license holder in Tingsboro, which we are. This lawsuit's not about traffic or the authority of the Planning Board or zoning interpretations. It's only about anti-competitive corporate greed. Juicy has no issue with the car wash or the brewery project or the warehouse projects that are adjacent to their location, as they do not involve cannabis, even though they will significantly increase traffic per the filings. Tingsboro's new pending bylaw authority for planning to authorize undersized lots development is no guarantee that a future special permit application for the exact same project would be approved. However, it will cost thousands of dollars and weeks of meetings for MJ's in Tingsboro. In America, parties can sue anybody for any reason. Juicy has chosen to repeatedly abuse this right, and they will again. In fact, Juicy has 26 million reasons to continue this lawsuit. $26 million is the 2021 revenue the store generated in Tingsboro. Juicy has indicated to Matt Hanson they will not drop the lawsuit against MJ's in Tingsboro. Juicy is a $1 billion publicly traded company and a multi-state operator cannabis leviathan. A full 12% of their national revenue was generated right here in Tingsboro in 2021, the goose that lays the golden egg. MJ's Market opposes any expansion that benefits Juicy or mitigations of their traffic problems by the warehouse project or otherwise, as it represents unfair capitulation for their demonstrated anti-competitive behavior. MJ's approach has always and only been to be a fourth multiplier for cannabis sales in Tingsboro. This will not detract from any sales. It will only amplify sales for all players through dual marketing benefits at these fantastic border locations. A demo and building permit could be issued at full risk to MJ's Market without a special permit. However, the building inspector, Paul Welcom, was concerned that he could also be sued by Juicy, a threat which was made publicly by Juicy during a Fall 2021 Special Permit meeting by Juicy attorney Peter Negozian. MJ's holds an active provisional license with the CCC for a retail cannabis operation in Tingsboro. MJ's Market will open in Tingsboro, per state law. A special permit will ultimately be required in order for us to open, and the plaintiffs know this well. This obstructionist stunt has played out in other towns, forcing bylaws to be updated to allow for even more retail stores so that the towns can comply with state law. Two stores is the right number for Tingsboro. The special permit does not need to be located at 405-409, which is the most ideal location at this time. An HCA update, a new site plan, et cetera, could be generated for our second location under LLI. Without the support of the town assisting us in pushing back in the suit in an authoritative manner, we offer this alternative location. Bill Gates' biggest regret, in his words, was underestimating the power of government when trying to dismantle Apple prior to the late '90s antitrust lawsuits. Bill learned a hard lesson, and fortunately, Microsoft and Apple are very successful today. The town belongs to the people and government of Tingsboro, and MJ's has had a desire to help Tingsboro meet the will of those people since 2018, the will to open two retail cannabis establishments in the town and for the town to benefit from both of those corporate citizens, not one. In conclusion, we respectfully ask for the support and input of the Board to help us move forward in a constructive direction, and now welcome any discussion by the Board specific to the ways Tingsboro can assist in ending this lawsuit or moving MJ's in an alternative direction. Thank you for your time and support. Now, open up to the floor.
It's a long, long letter. Who would like to kick it off? Well, let me ask a couple of questions, since I was the one here last time you were in front of us. You know, at that time, you know, we had, you know, we discussed multiple things. You know, one of them, financial, see if you're financially viable to be able to, you know, put the second retail location up. You know, it's been now 12, 14, 15, almost 16 months since you've last been here. You know, at that time, I believe at your RFP, you stated that your profits from Grafton Retail Store would be one of the ways you would be funding this. So one of the key things I'd like to know, now that we are 15, almost 16 months into this, and this is a two-year...in two years, you're supposed to have Be Up and Operational, which is April of 2023. Are you willing to share your financials with us to see if you're a viable candidate to put the second retail store up in a very short period of time?
So we have a separate group of investors that invest in our properties. We don't own any of our physical buildings, and that's part of our strategy. One of our group of investors is here with us today. So to answer the question on the viability of building this, as soon as we can get past these hurdles, we have the ability to start working on this process. It's irrelevant to the factors. We are doing fine in Grafton. Things are continually progressing every day, but the funding for this will come from that same group of investors that currently owns our Grafton location as well. So we have a separate pool of financiers, if you will, that own our properties for us, and part of this is because of the federal regulations and the concerns about that from our investors. Separating the two facilities completely is better for all of our investors. So that's our strategy of our path moving forward, so to speak, on owning properties, is to not do and to lease those properties, but control them through our investment group. And that's exactly how we plan to do it here, just as well as we did in Grafton.
Yeah. I remember that we talked about this last time you were here, too. That's how you're going, you know, for the property. But to build the property, who is going to build it and who is going to fund the building of the, you know, the building?
Yeah, no, it is that group of...it's our separate group of realty investors, if you will.
Okay.
So we kind of have two different pools of investors, one that owns the company and one that doesn't and owns properties. They own the properties for us, and then we lease from them. We do have the options to buy those properties within our leases, but until it's federally legal, we don't feel it's in our best interest because we're that smaller company. We're not the multi-state MSO that just goes and takes that risk of buying properties because you can stand to lose a lot more should something federally change in an instant. So from our protection standpoint, we feel it's very important to separate those two components away from each other. Have MJ's Market as our separate entity and our investment group to invest and own the properties, which is a compelling thing for them because there's, you know, profit, obviously, in the business of realty as well.
So is an investment company willing to share their financials so this Board can make sure that you have the money to execute on this project?
I can't speak for them, but I'll ask them.
Okay. Because that's very important. You know, we went through the RFP process last time. You didn't give us those financials, and I thought that was one of the more important things that we really need. And, you know, now that we're in a very short timeframe, you know, I think that's very important. So how quickly can we get that to us?
I mean, I'll have to ask them. So I'll respond to you tomorrow with an answer.
Okay. I'll overhand to the Board any other questions. That's my first question.
We do have cost estimates and everything for the construction so that will map along with, you know, the backing from our investment group. So they'll own the property and pay for the construction with our general contractor.
Yeah, we'll definitely need all the financials. You know, the building, I don't know how much it's going to cost your investment group to purchase the property. You know, the last time we went through an RFP, the other two companies actually had the purchase and sale agreement for us. So whatever you have that's finalized or what's not finalized, we're going to really need all information to make the best decision that we can.
We do have an active lease that is in effect now on the property, so we have that.
Yeah, we'd like to see a copy of everything to make sure that financially, you know, it's financially viable to build this over the next eight months. Selectwoman Kalabokas, do you have any questions?
I do have some questions, but I'm wondering if maybe we can hear comments from...does Town Council have comments before I...
Absolutely. You have the floor.
I...oh, sorry. I should be using this. Can you...are you picking me up? I actually have several questions, if you don't mind my asking. So is the Grafton facility up and running, operational? Okay. And when did you get the original...when did you execute your HCA in Grafton?
It was probably 18 months prior, so we've been open since October of last year. So I would say 2019 spring, I believe.
So it took you 18 months to do the full build-out to commence operations?
Yeah, that was a retrofit of a very large building, so not like this at all in that respect.
Okay.
That has a grow and processing facility, too, that we're in process of building.
Okay.
But the retail's...
But the retail's active since October.
And the grow and processing facility is still being built out? That's not?
Yep, permitted, designed, and construction has begun on those.
Okay. So, the portion, that's the retail portion, took 18 months to build out and fully permit?
Actually, construction and licensing took about eight or nine months. So, from the time we got the building permit to final licensure by the state was about eight or nine months. So, it's kind of in line with what Selectwoman Cohane is saying.
Right, but from the execution of the HCA, it was 18 months?
Yeah, it was from the permit date. So, I can go get a building permit next week if I can get past this lawsuit, and then you're looking at about eight or nine months.
Okay.
Till we cut the ribbon with the Chamber of Commerce. Was that your question?
Yeah, so it took you 18 months from the HCA, eight or nine months to build out from the date of getting a building permit?
And the other things in there, of course, with special permit, community outreach, things we've already done in Tingsborough, but without the special permit, you can't petition the state for final licensure.
Yeah.
So, that's a criteria is really, that's one of the, you gotta give them all kinds of stuff, but that's one thing.
Yeah.
But the provisional license was issued based on the issuance of the HCA with Tingsborough last spring.
Yeah, okay. And I saw that, I know that you're not lawyers, so I apologize because I know you have someone representing you, but I saw that it took four months to file for the motion for expedited discovery in that case. Do you know whether or not discovery is issued?
Yeah, like I said, yeah, discovery closed Friday.
It just closed Friday.
It just closed?
Correct.
So, you've completed discovery?
Yeah, other than this deposition, which I have Thursday, that's it. And then there's a traffic study back and forth, and I believe what the judge said that would be November, right, is the goal for the ruling.
Surprisingly, the lawsuit wasn't about the special permit and the lot size, which befuddled me a little. I'm no attorney by any stretch, but it came into a traffic study issue. And what the judge requested is that Juicy provide, you know, they said it may be unsafe for two locations to coincide close together, and they said kind of prove it, right? Put a traffic study together and show these things that you're talking about, I guess, or what safety you may be concerned about or what have you. So, they have till the end of August, August 31st, they're supposed to supply that. And I think one of the things that kind of sparked this momentum from our standpoint is that mass DOT approved traffic study from the 406 warehouse that's being built, it was kind of astonishing to me to see a mass DOT approved traffic study that says you need more traffic in order to put a traffic light in. So, that, and that's when I called Matt and said, maybe, you know, what can we do? And we kind of came to the conclusion of let's call and just see if they'll drop the case, which we did, and it was unsuccessful. So, now we're here to kind of look at ways, you know, as I've said since 2018, we just want to open, right? We're local guys that want to open our cannabis dispensary at our home zone, so to speak, and we've been trying to do that this entire time. And that's, we're looking for ideas to help us to get to that process.
Okay, and so the judge has indicated that the expectation is that you'll have final disposition in November?
Yeah, what the, we've also asked for that speedy trial during that time.
Yeah.
And they did say, I think, that the final would be, I don't remember the exact date, but there was a timeline. I'm happy to get that for you and share that timeline with you. It's, you know, it's in the public documents, but I'll be sure to put that in with some of the other information I provide you.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it was November 15th or exactly what the date is, but that is the goal from the.
Right. So, then, do you have a plan in place from November to, someone do that math for me, that's five months to complete construction?
Yeah.
Because, so, do you have a copy of that project plan, for lack of a better word, to present to the board?
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that. We have like RFPs, you know, and proposals from contractors and site folks, but yeah, we could definitely put together a timeline on that.
Okay. And the other thing I didn't hear, I know that you're asking for a second location, but it wasn't specific, or at least that I heard, and maybe I misheard, but do you have a particular address that you're requesting for? So, what's that?
That is 80 Locust Ave. And with that, there would be entrances from Middlesex Street, right near the brewery. There would be access in from there.
Okay.
And on Locust, too, or?
Yes.
Ready? Okay.
And do you have an agreement in place with the property owner?
She's in this room.
That's you?
Yeah.
And what's the build-out requirement for that property?
So, it's similar because if we have to, if we stick with the current location, we still have two or three months of court to deal with, right? And if you, if we are allowed to change, then I've got two to three months of site, new site work, right? I can't reuse the site work and permitting for a special permit and hoping I get it in my hand that time. So, it's kind of similar.
And you have to go through the CCC to do a change of address?
Yeah, and that'd be a parallel effort. It's, and they've been pretty efficient with the address changes and things like that. They just put it on their monthly meeting. We were pleasantly surprised how quickly we got that provisional license in Tingsborough compared to how long it took in the Grafton. You know, they're getting a lot more efficient as time goes on and the industry matures.
Could you share with us, when did you get the provisional license for Tingsborough?
September, I believe. Matt, you got a request from the state over the last summer, right? Something, I'm not sure when, but the state makes a request of the town, said, hey, do they really have an HCA? Did you really, or did they forge this thing? And then, that's one of the last things. I think it was the September meeting.
Yeah, they asked me in April of 2021 if your HCA was legitimate, and so it usually takes just a couple of months after that.
It may have been July, but we can send you a copy of that provision.
Yeah, please.
They skipped one month, too, that summer COVID things, I think.
And I know that from the initial application or when the initial RFP was put out in Tingsborough, one of the major reasons for selecting you was the location and to remediate an existing condition. So, the question is, what would happen to that property in the event that you decide not to proceed with a facility there?
So, that's a question. It would be up to the landlords, obviously. You know, I do believe they have people waiting in the wings, but we would certainly work with them to support something going in there.
So, you would be out completely of the real estate transaction there? You would be completely out? I mean, those were my questions. I can speak to any questions that the board had relative to the host community agreement, but those were the questions that I had regarding the presentation. I don't know if it makes sense to deal with that after or?
Well, I'll open up to the board and see if we have any other questions. Selectwoman Eldridge?
So, as, I've got a few questions on like, so, the land at 405 to 409 Middlesex, who currently owns that?
Collette Elkar, the landlord, Collette.
So, you folks don't have control over that?
We're leasing it now. We're leasing the house and the lot.
So, you have a lease with them at this point? And, okay, so your financiers are not going to be purchasing that land, and then they would be your landlords?
It would be set up as a long-term lease with the finance group with the intent to purchase at some time.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, it's a month-to-month. Just hold the property.
Yep.
And we'll go on.
The lease would be a 50-year lease is what the terms that we have in place with her.
Got it. And then, so you said you're ready to go right now. If there's no lawsuit, you can go and get your permit. There are no pending permits, nothing left at this point, other than you just need to be able to move without having a lawsuit?
Yeah, just working with the building inspector at the Tingsborough lab, get a demo permit and submit the plans for a building permit.
You might have to have an environmentalist come in just to make sure there's no asbestos on the property.
Yeah, that would have to happen, too, so.
Okay, and then, can I defer on this? Because it looks like Selectwoman Calabocas has a question.
Absolutely.
I do have a question. I just don't want to let it go because I would like to dig a little bit further into Selectwoman Eldridge's question because I want to be sure here. So, 405 to 409, right? My understanding is that the major objective of us leasing it to you in particular would be to make it, give it a certain aesthetic, right? And now I'm hearing that if you are to leave and to go to 80 Locust, you have no control over what happens at 405 to 409. That's your realty people who now have control to make it. We are not sure what? So, I guess I'm a little bit confused about where that leaves us and that property.
So, maybe I missed the question. So, if the assumption was that we moved to a different location?
Right, so my understanding is part of your ask or part of the presentation is, if for some reason, you can no longer have MJ's Market at 405 to 409, your backup plan is to move to 80 Locust. Now, in this scenario, when you move to 80 Locust, the question is, what happens to 405, 409?
That would be up to the landlord.
Yes, our real estate group isn't involved yet until we get the special permit. So, you know, it's just MJ's Market has a month-to-month lease. So, once we get the special permit, then we would bring in that group to invest the $2 to $3 million that would take to build the actual building and knock down the other one. So, right now, it's just, it's almost like we're renting an apartment now. So, we would let that expire and then move to the other location. So, as far as, you know, the goal of getting rid of that house and putting something else there, you know, we've discussed alternatives, but I don't have a proposal for you today, you know, whether it's a yoga studio or something that doesn't annoy Juicy.
So, I guess the bottom-line answer is, we're not sure if it would be beneficial to Tingsborough for you to move to 80 Locust, which is an okay answer. I'm just trying to make sure that I'm clear here.
I guess from an aesthetic standpoint, that would be a correct statement, right? But there's a lot of tax revenue for both stores to be open, right? And like at Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, having two close by brings more people to that area. It doesn't disperse the business between the two companies, right? You go to Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, they're both very busy places, and they're next door to each other, right? And that's kind of, now you have two marketing efforts, getting people to this area as opposed to other locations along the border.
I understand your thinking. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to Selectwoman Eldridge. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm going to go one more step beyond that.
I just want to make sure we didn't let that point go.
MJ's Market has month-to-month lease right now with the owner of the yellow house.
That's correct.
And so, before, we were talking about your investment group, your real estate group, they were going to own it longer term, or they were going to have the lease longer term?
On both locations, there's letter of intents with agreements in place.
Do they have a final agreement with the landlord?
Letter of intents, right now.
Letter of intent, not a final?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that similar to the one you gave us 16 months ago? Different?
I don't know. I would have to, I'm sure it's very similar. It might have changed, it might have been modified to some. Well, I know it's been modified because there's been a lot of back and forth between attorneys.
Okay, so you have a letter of intent?
Very similar.
But it is not finalized yet at this point?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Selectwoman Eldridge?
And I'm not sure if Selectwoman Wintersstrom has any questions, but let me ask one question of Town Council. So, there was an allusion to some sort of risk to the town or the building inspector for issuing a permit at risk? Any thoughts on that or?
No, I just, oh, sorry. I don't know what his concerns would be. I mean, naturally, anyone can sue for any reason, right? But he would be acting within the scope of his authority to issue a building permit that has an approved special permit regardless of the status of the Superior Court action. So.
Thank you, yeah. So, as we start to consider various options, just because a party to this may threaten a suit, that doesn't take that off the table for us? Thank you. I didn't know if anybody.
Selectwoman Calabocas, are you all set?
I think I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Selectwoman Moran, do you have any questions?
I'm all set for town.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I ask one follow-up question, too?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm so sorry. So, your recent analogy of Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks was that having two differing facilities but of the same, selling the same product in the general vicinity is advantageous economically because it draws the crowd to the business. So, in fact, from a purely business perspective, based on your own representation there, would be more economically beneficial for the town to insist on this location? Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that.
And it's the same but different. So, in Grafton, we tend to carry products that are not carried by other dispensaries very close by, and people have preferences like anything, Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts, for example. So, we get folks that come to us just because we have certain things and they go elsewhere for other things.
Right, understood. Thank you.
Okay, is there any specific changes you're requesting us from your initial host agreement?
I guess we're looking for, you know, additional insight from the town to support us on our efforts of.
Yeah, I think specifically, and this is from our attorneys, would be, you know, would the town be willing to, or Town Council be willing to help us in a discussion with Juicy's counsel on this traffic situation with this warehouse and, you know, maybe they can just drop the suit? So, that was one specific ask. And then the other ask was, if we run into a case where we should lose or whatever, what would be the recourse for alternate locations? And when is the right time to get serious about alternate locations? Is it amended host agreement with the town or what that would allow us to do that?
Chairman Cohane, just a note, Selectwoman Wintersstrom has.
Oh, sorry. Well, I actually had one question, but I wanted to see if you wanted to check with Selectwoman Wintersstrom before I voted in. Selectwoman Wintersstrom, did you have any questions before I jump in? I wanted to make sure the whole board.
Yes, thank you. I guess a comment and a question to Town Council is, you know, we had an applicant before us a few years ago who was afforded a lot of opportunities to make changes in location and different parts of their agreement. I think we even extended their agreement. So, is there anything in this that, again, puts us in that same position where we're under some obligation to work with them, to afford them the opportunity for the business to succeed?
Should I, through the chair?
Yes.
May I answer? Okay. So, the reality is contracting authority with the select board is discretionary, and there's a ton of caseload to support that proposition. And what the board determines to be a material term, and here as part of the selection process, I believe, and I wasn't there, but it's my understanding that. I believe, and I wasn't there, but it's my understanding that part of that process in evaluating the various applicants was that the location to remediate what was, what was deemed, I guess, less desirable as, as an existing condition was, was a real substantive reason for this, the selection. So, um, and, and point, point number one. Point number two, what the board did with another entity, it has really no bearing, right? Because you learn from your prior experience and create contractual provisions which are more protective for the town because you've had that experience with a prior applicant. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the same quote breaks or whatever that you gave to a prior applicant have to be afforded in this situation either. So it doesn't expose you, in my estimation, to additional liability where you've made concessions with other groups when the entire decision as to whether or not to give an HGA in the first place is discretionary. I'm not sure if that answered your question. Did it answer your question?
Um, yes, somewhat. And I mean, and I guess, you know, the only other comment is, you know, we're not, in terms of the location, we're not, I don't see where, you know, allowing them to switch to the locus of, that's a huge issue in terms of a great move. We're not putting it, you know, say, they're not looking to put it across town or, or in, you know, a substantively, substantively different area. They're looking to just move it to kind of settle the issue and be able to open their business. So I, I think it's a reasonable request and clearly we've honored reasonable requests from other applicants. But I, you know, I understand that there's some concerns with the, the timing and drag, you know, we don't want to get to where we were with another applicant, which is several years down the road and, and not have the license issued. So there is some concern there, right? Valid concern.
So on, on that point, a license has been issued, right? We do have a provisional license. We're two steps away from opening. All we have to do is prove to the CCC that we're, we meet all the security standards and we have a viable location that meets all the criteria. And, and the lawsuit is what's holding us up, right? So from our standpoint, we're just looking at all the alternative methods of our fastest path to opening. It's always been our goal, our fastest path to opening, and that's what we're seeking is that fastest path. And I think, you know, your town council, one of the things that struck me as interesting is you said you could issue the special permit for the current location. Does that mean we can build and open with a lawsuit pending?
You can build at risk?
Yeah, so, so no, we would not be able to open if there's still a lawsuit pending. And therein lies the problem is we have no idea. I mean, there's an expedited recovery for November, but as we said early on, people can sue anybody for anything. So we don't know how long this lawsuit can go on and that affects all of us, both the town and, and us.
Can I give it back to Kate again? So, well, you finished? You, did you say you could build at risk or?
You could build at risk.
At risk, yeah. But that means we may never open.
The, if, if you built out based on the special permit and the judge were to decide the special permit were issued improperly, which a special permit is a use that's allowed subject to conditions of the planning board as opposed to allowed by right where you get a building permit, you don't have to go through a permitting process, you would lose that essentially investment.
So basically what you're saying is you could build at risk, so?
Yes.
Well, I'll put it back to you.
So, so we could build at risk, but we'd never know when we might be able to open?
Are you saying the CCC won't let you open if someone is appealing your location even if the town has issued the permits?
That, I, I don't know if that's actually true. If, if the CCC would deny a final permit because there's a pending lawsuit, to be honest, I'm not 100% sure and I don't think that's been vetted at the CCC level.
I can't file, I can't file the special permit with the, with the county unless I have it. And it is a criteria for final licensure. So I could.
But you have the special permit.
You do, but I can't file it with the county, with the register of deeds. Cause it's, cause it's appealed.
Oh, you have to file a reported special permit with the CCC.
Correct, that's what I would have done the next day in November.
I see.
If I had it. And then you need to send a copy of that to the state for final licensure.
Okay, so you, you do have to file, so with the special permit, if an appeal's pending, there's an endorsement that goes on the plans that says no appeal has been filed and 20 days has expired.
Okay. So let's keep going through the chair here, a lot of back and forth. So through the chair, Selectwoman Calabocas.
So is that for them to begin building or for them to open?
Open.
For them to open. So my understanding is if you can begin building at risk and you're going to have some kind of final decision in November, it's up to you to decide.
We assume there's a final decision in November.
You assume, right? But everything with the court system is maybe it will, maybe it won't, right? And I'm not sure how long. But at the end of the day, right, it's up to you to decide if you think that this lawsuit has merit and you think.
That's up to a judge to decide, I would think.
Well, it's, that's what at risk is. At some point you're going to have to decide when it is that you think, is there high enough risk to begin building or not? And I, I understand Selectwoman Winnerstrom's point and I agree with her to a certain extent that, you know, we want to do everything to help the business, but at the same time, it's been a while at this point and I do want to see something worthwhile go where the yellow building is. I think that that's an important piece of this. And I think at some point we have to weigh, right? If you're not confident about this lawsuit, how much responsibility do we want to take to leave the yellow building open because you're unsure how long the lawsuit is going to take? So I understand what you're saying and I understand that it's, you're stuck a little bit between a rock and a hard place, but I think we have to have some more discussions surrounding how solid do we know your building plan, your financing, et cetera, is? And what, how much emphasis do we want to put on getting something in that specific spot that we discussed? So I think for me, I, the, the board as a whole is probably going to have to have some more discussions around what is our more, most important goals and how much data do we have from you? And I do appreciate you offering today to supply us with additional information because I think that that's going to be a driving factor in whatever decision we have. So I do appreciate your presentation. It's been very helpful and I think, you know, once we get the information requested, it'll be a lot easier to ask more in-depth questions or even to come to a more final solution.
Yeah, and, and I, I'll, I'll reiterate that. I think there's a lot of information that we are going to need from you still. And, you know, maybe we just make that request to do it in an expedited fashion to see, so we have a lot more information for us to make a decision. But again, you know, I asked earlier, is there any other changes that you need from the host, the host agreement at this time?
I mean, there's some dates in the appendix that have come and gone, you know? We could update those, but if you guys are okay with it, you know, not, not really. It's, the location is the, is the main thing.
Yeah, but most of the appendix is based on previous things that have not been completed, like the demo permit, right? Everything was kind of based on, you know, where we're at now is once you get the demo permit, then you have X amount of time to demo it, then you have X amount of time to start. So, so that one's okay. But I haven't heard when you talk about in November, if, you know, the judge decides in November, you know, I, I would think you'd want to request the host agreement expires in April of 2023. There's no possible way you can hit that.
So.
And that's if you stay at the yellow house and if you go to another location, I don't see any way you can hit that either because now you got to add, you got to go to the CCC, you know, for the provisional license and then all the others and the permitting and everything else. It's only eight months, eight months and what, 10 days or something away? There's no way you could hit that either.
Yeah. So I, it sounds like we'll be back asking for an extension based on all this information, right? This is one of the reasons we're here is to gather all this information and try to find the best path forward so we can get open.
So I, I think we're going to have a quite extensive list. Our next meeting is August 22nd?
Yes.
August 22nd? Very quick, thank you. So maybe in two weeks, we'll look at the board, maybe all the information that we requested, if we get that back in two weeks, because there's enough time to look it over and then make the best decision possible of what we can do. I'm seeing head nods, so, uh, yes.
Just to clarify, I mean, on, on one hand, I know you noted you want to get open as soon as possible, but my question really is if they continue to appeal and you're pushing to that two-year deadline or say you get an extension and you start to get pushed again, but you're getting very favorable feelings, you, you win the first lawsuit, it's very strongly worded, knowing that it's going to take at least six to eight months to do the build out and an appeal may take somewhere around that time, is there some point where you're confident enough in your case that you will start the build out to help expedite the time to market?
I, I think today we can't say that because I would have to speak to that investment group. What I will say is we'll put that in the information that we're, we're putting here today.
Yeah, you don't have to answer now, but that would be my kind of question for them.
One second. Selectwoman Winnerstrom, do you have any, any other questions?
Not at this time. If we're going to continue it, I'm happy to let them provide the information that's been requested and keep an open mind about where we go from here.
Okay.
One more, one more quick comment that might be useful. I've been speaking with Eric Solerno, the planner, and obviously you, you guys just retooled your bylaws a little bit to allow the planning board the full authority with no question to allow for this undersized lot development, we're, we're slightly undersized. So we had to go to zoning and then it got kicked back because they didn't want us to do a variance, so they wanted us to do a determination rather than a variance. So I had to apply for a second special permit where, or second zoning bit. But now it appears, once the AG approves your new bylaws, that the planning board would have the full authority. So Eric has invited us to resubmit the special permit a third time. I think the bylaws get incorporated the end of August, so it'd be the September meeting. So that's a possible tack where, okay, now we pull back the other special permit, go for this other one and, and see if that survives the 20-day or if there's just another suit.
So just to clarify, you wouldn't have to pull back your original to apply for another one, so you could still hold on to the one you have?
And that's the bylaw at the, at the May town meeting that was approved and that's all, that was approved to that point, right?
Yes, we, we've just been waiting for the AG to approve it, but it'll be, I think it's approved now, so they'll be able to get on track for a September meeting with the planning board.
But it would be a new, new permit to your point. It's not a rejiggering of their old permit, yes.
New permit for the exact same project.
Right, understood.
So are we all in agreement that we have, we have a lot of questions, things that we need responded to and then we kick this off again the next meeting?
Yes.
I believe we're all.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it very much.
We'll send you a list and please work through the town administrator in responding to that. And I would think two weeks from today is, hopefully is a, is a sufficient timeframe to get that to us and that gives us plenty of time if we have any follow-up questions to, before our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Be quick now.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming, Kate.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda, post September 6th state primary warrant.
I won't read the memo in front of you, we're just looking for a motion from the board to approve the September 6th primary warrant, which has been provided to us by the town clerk's office.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, have a motion, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve and post a September 6th, 2022 state primary election warrant.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote, Selectwoman Moran.
In favor.
Selectwoman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winnerstrom.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 500. Next on the agenda, application for a one-day liquor license, Notre Dame Academy. Shannon?
Yes. Okay, so Lauren Marquis, she's the Director of Institutional Advancement at Academy in Notre Dame, is requesting the one-day liquor license for their annual homecoming event, which is set to take place on Saturday, September 24th, 2022. It's very similar to last year's event, which the board approved the one-day license for and which they plan to have a beer garden for guests over the age of 21, which will run from 11:00 AM through 4:00 PM, the same time as lunch, with a local brewery setting up the beer garden. And the beer garden will be located apart from the rest of the activities at the outdoor event.
Any questions from the board? Selectwoman Winnerstrom, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yep, no questions. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Selectwoman Winnerstrom.
Selectwoman Winnerstrom.
Thank you. In the past, for, for some of these, have we considered either reducing their fee or giving it to them? For some reason, my memory, I think there's been times when Notre Dame has applied for those one-day licenses where we have waived the fee for them.
I think we may have for some of them. We don't have an exact list of which ones you've waived, but I do recall for at least some of their different events, they may have waived fees, the board. It's totally within your discretion.
Mr. Chair, how much is the fee?
I'll, I'll ask the.
It's a hundred.
Hundred now?
How much?
A hundred, one hundred, yeah.
In the past, we waived the fee once when they did like a community welcome back event at NDA. We haven't waived it for fundraisers in the past.
Okay, thank you. So this is a fundraiser for them?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for a one-day liquor license for the Academy of Notre Dame on Saturday, September 24th, 2022, from 11:00 AM through 4:00 PM.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote, Selectwoman Moran.
In favor.
Selectwoman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winnerstrom.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 500. Next on the agenda, review and approve amendments to the senior tax work-off program. Mr. Town Administrator. I'm going to turn this over to Colin.
Thank you.
Mr. Assistant Town Administrator.
You got it. There are basically two changes that were, one requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen, one is for the board's information. Two of the biggest comments that we got regarding the senior tax work-off, one was that most of the work was done in the, a different calendar year than the tax credit was applied. The other was the hourly rate paid to participants. So the Board of Assessors addresses both of those. They recently took a vote to recommend that the Board of Selectmen approve a schedule change, essentially aligning the program with the calendar year. So now if this schedule, which is included in your packet, is approved, participants will do 100% of their work in the same calendar year that the tax credit is applied. Makes it easier for our assessors to track and it certainly makes it easier for participants to know when to expect that credit. Additionally, and probably most importantly to the participants, the Board of Assessors voted to increase the maximum abatement to $1,500 per participant, that's up from $1,000. This would accommodate a higher hourly rate for participants. In doing so, they've reviewed the job descriptions and they, they have recommended that the positions be classified in two different ways. One would have an hourly rate of $15 per hour and one would have an hourly rate of $13 per hour. The first category would need 100 hours to complete the maximum benefit and the second would need 115. Essentially, we use a lot of senior tax work-off help in this building to update databases, scan files, review plans, whether or not they can be digitized and disposed of. Other departments use senior tax workers in different ways and so I think the Board of Assessors wanted to recognize that a lot of that database and computer work requires a little more attention than some of the other positions. And so those types of jobs would get the $15 per hour rate and the others would get the 13. All of that is an increase from the 825 that participants were previously getting. The only vote needed of the Board of Selectmen tonight is the vote to approve the schedule, but since the Board of Selectmen and the assessors jointly run this program, just providing that information.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Selectwoman Eldridge.
Mr. Chair, so I guess my, my question is, I don't know why we were paying them eight bucks an hour or whatever it was, and now we're talking about $13 an hour and $15 an hour. hour, minimum wage is more than that, correct?
The program is tied to federal minimum wage, which is still 825, or might even be lower.
Right, and, but I'm saying, here in Massachusetts, I don't know that it sends the right message to our seniors that we're, we're paying them that low, so, I mean, personally, I would think that we'd want to look at, I'm fine with the tiered rate on it, but having 13 and 15 seems to me that we're, we're not being fair, so.
It was severely under that before, I don't remember exactly what it was.
It was 825, which is a federal minimum.
It was 825?
825.
825, so, we're upping it quite a bit at this point, and I think the Board of Assessors did a diligent job, and, you know, hurt our concerns, you know, I'm glad they raised the rate, I'm not sure if it should be raised more than that or not at this time, but, Mr. Assistant Town Administrator, you have a comment?
If I may, the rates they, our Chief Assessor Lauren Woke put together an average of all the communities that participate, 13 is the average, so our 15 would be higher than the average, and 13 would be in par with other communities are doing, there are still a handful of communities at that 825 rate as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Selectwoman Winistram.
Isn't currently the average, isn't currently the minimum wage in Massachusetts 1350 an hour, I believe that's what it is, so...
I think it's 1425, I think it's 1425.
1425, did it just go up? I thought it was...
The beginning of the year, I think it went up.
Thank you.
1425, yeah.
This year, I mean, typically, I think, because it's a, it's a work-off program, it, you know, we don't have to set it at the standard of the minimum wage, but I'd be more than amenable to, you know, work out an agreement where the lowest meets the Massachusetts minimum wage, and then perhaps there's not as big a spread between the two, because obviously, we can't, you know, we don't want to necessarily go higher than 15, based on the calculations that the Board of Assessors did, and I'm happy to go with their arrangements, or recommendations, excuse me, or, you know, adjust that, talk to them about adjusting the bottom tier accordingly.
Selectwoman Eldridge.
I just, to me, Massachusetts minimum wage is higher than federal, there's a reason for that, it's a higher cost of living, you know, I think it's one of those ones where perhaps, we could look at just getting them to 1425 an hour for the first tier, and then, you know, 1525, or 1625, whatever it is, I just think that it doesn't seem fair to me, and that we may be sending the wrong message, if we're not paying them the state minimum wage, and I understand that there are some communities that are paying less, and the average was 13, and I appreciate what the, you know, what the Board of Assessors did, and I'm just thinking about, for our community, and the message that we want to have, I personally think that the lowest that we should be paying is 1425 an hour.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question, is the 14, 13, $15 an hour, is it based on their limit of the $1,500 they can get off their taxes, so are they just working at this rate to get to that $1,500, so, in effect, if we would raise it, they'd have to work less hours to get that?
Correct.
That's what you're saying, and you're trying to tie that, Selectman Eldridge, to the minimum wage, and I think what the Board of Assessors is doing, is just trying to come up with some math to tie it to the $1,500, or the $1,000 that was before, the $1,500, they probably didn't take into account minimum wage, so I think it's a math problem that they figured out for us, and we're just trying to tie it to something that may not be on the same line.
One question, if we do decide to raise it, would we, would it be appropriate to go back to the Board of Assessors first, since they're the ones that proposed this?
I think that the Board of Selectmen could recommend to the Board of Assessors to amend their, our rate, the only formal vote needed from the Board of Selectmen is on the schedule.
Okay, would you definitely vote on the schedule, Selectwoman Calabocas?
I'll keep it short, but I absolutely see where Selectman Eldridge is coming from, and should he feel the need to make a motion for that standard, I would absolutely support it.
I don't know if he wants to make a motion, I was hoping, we were all hoping you would make a motion.
I can still make a motion, but I figured I would give him the opportunity, since it was his idea.
Yeah, I would also agree in the 1425, but then, then I look at the $15 an hour, and I know what they're trying to do there, for the people that are doing a lot of the different types of work, to raise it a little bit more, so, you know, that one in particular, the Board of Assessors might want to look at that also, but I'm willing to take any motion.
Do we need to make a motion on recommending that, because I thought we were just voting on the schedule, but...
So, I can motion for the schedule first, and then, Selectman Eldridge can motion for the amounts.
Beautiful, go for it.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the changes to the fiscal year 23 senior tax work-off program, as presented.
Second. The motion is second, roll call vote, Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winistram.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Do I have another motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the Board of Assessors to reassess the pay rates, and that the minimum match Massachusetts minimum wage, and make a further recommendation to us relative to those amounts.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, any further discussion on that?
You know, I just, I'm going to make a different kind of vote, whatever, but it's based on the fact that I don't have enough information to make a qualified decision on this, so my roll call vote will be abstaining.
Okay, is there anything we can do to...
So, Mr. Chair, so, the motion on the floor, just as a point of clarification, is to make a recommendation to the Board of Assessors to reassess the amount, not to set the amount.
Right.
Just want to make sure that I'm clear on that.
Okay, roll call vote, Selectman Moran.
I'll still abstain.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
Favor.
Selectwoman Winistram.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 401, and that will go back to the Board of Assessors, and we'll probably put it on the agenda for next meeting. Next on the agenda, contract approval, winter recovery assistance program, RAP.
Yes, Charlie Baker approved 100 million in funding for the winter recovery assistance program, it's known as RAP, Tingsborough's share will be $267,380, which is a sizable amount, considering we only receive about 430,000 a year in Chapter 90 funding, municipalities must spend the RAP funding by June 30, 2023, so that's the big difference between this funding and our Chapter 90 funding, which basically just rolls over and builds up until we use it, the eligible items are rehab, reconstruction, road striping, painting, traffic control devices, et cetera, most of the typical things we would fund through Chapter 90 anyways, so in speaking with our town engineer, his plan is to essentially spend the RAP funding first, on our fiscal 23 roads program, and essentially save that $267,000 in Chapter 90, if you will, but ultimately, costs have been going up with gas and asphalt, and we're, you know, pushing our, pushing our limits anyways, so we may need to use some of that funding just to meet our five-year plan that you saw previously, if there's additional funding, he'll request a small change order in the spring to maybe add a street, or add another side, or something else with the additional funding, but essentially, we're going to keep our roads program as is, and do it as aggressively as we can, and we'll just spend the RAP funding before we'll dip into the Chapter 90.
Does this go into any special account, Chapter 90 stabilization account, or just...
Essentially, like a, essentially, like a state grant program.
Okay, okay, any questions from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board approves the contract as presented, and authorize the town administrator to execute all necessary contract documents.
Second. The motion is second, roll call vote, Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
Favor.
Selectwoman Winistram.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 500. Next on the agenda, IAFF Local 5297 Fire Union Contract, Mr. Town Administrator.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, the Board of Selectmen approved the MOA in executive session at your last meeting, now we're just publicly ratifying it, as I noted to the Board in executive session, the fire union has already ratified the MOA themselves, so this is the last step in the process, this will be a contract for fiscal year 23 through 25, I won't read every line item, but for residents at home, if they want to view, view this, there was a change to the different types of shifts, we added a 12-hour shift, we made a few language changes to the overtime section, to split up firefighters from the command staff, lieutenants and captains, so they'd have two separate overtime lists, so there'll be savings to the town there, we added the Juneteenth federal holiday, we made some adjustments to what hour shifts their holidays will fall on, we added after the words "for a period not to exceed 90 days," the words "unless mutually extended by both the employee of the town" for the injured-on-duty section, so before, that was limited to only three months, but now, if somebody needs more accommodations for a longer period of time, at least we'll have that flexibility in the contract, we made a small change to the clothing allowance, the wages, which is, you know, probably the most important, and the most, the item that most residents would find interesting, they did agree to 2% cost-of-living adjustment year over year, however, being a newer union, just completing the first union contract, a review of comps showed that they did need a market correction, we phased in a small correction over the three years, with an additional 1% correction, again, that was based on comps, though, that was not the cost-of-living adjustment, and then, we did also concede to a 1% raise for their acceptance of that modified overtime language, which now, the lieutenants and captains, and the deputy will not be able to fill firefighter shifts at their overtime rate, we did make a change to the recruit level, which was making somewhere in the teens per hour, we did bump that up to 23 per hour, because it's hard to get new recruits into the department, we have a few other language changes in here, we added one stipend of 5% for the EMS coordinator, a few adjustments to the grade schedule, and added a small amount of longevity to match what, basically, the average of the other fire unions that we looked at, basically ranges from $750 to $2,500 for those 20-plus years.
And that is the summary. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Selectwoman Winistram.
Thank you, I apologize if I'm not remembering how we're, on the wage adjustments, if we talked about this, and how we answered it, on the wage adjustments for, is it the market correction, then 2%, or 2%, and then the market correction, I mean, I think it roughly works out the same way, but it might, there might be a slight differential, so we might just want, at some point, to clarify which, in which order, the 2% and then the 1% market correction come in.
That's a great question, I'll actually have to probably double-check with Darren, I can't answer that right now.
I mean, the math should work out within probably sense of one another, but it might be just something we want to spell out before it becomes an issue.
Sure, I'll look into it, yeah, I mean, honestly, I'm okay with agreeing to it the way it is, I mean, the fire union's already approved it, we approved it in executive session, as you said, that would be very minor.
No, I understand we can't modify it, I'm just saying, you know, once we agree to it, we should have an understanding with them following this, as to how that's going to be calculated.
Okay.
So that we're not at a point next year where there's a question.
Okay, yeah, any other questions, Selectwoman Winistram?
Well, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the MOA with IAFF Local 5297 Fire Union as presented.
Second. The motion is second, roll call vote, Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winistram.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 500. Appointments, Mr. Town Administrator.
Mr. Chair, former Selectman Karen Puleo has reached out to our office to express interest in the LRTA representative position for Tingsborough, so we are requesting her appointment this evening, it's for a one-year term ending June 30, 2023.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Karen Puleo to the Lowell Regional Transit Authority for a term effective immediately, and to expire on June 30, 2023.
Second. I have a motion, and a second, roll call vote, Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
Favor.
Selectwoman Winistram.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 500. Town Education Fund Committee.
Great, Town Education Fund Committee discusses how money can be spent on educational opportunities and purposes for the town, and they currently have two vacancies, our office received a letter of interest from Renee Herbert, Renee is a Tingsborough resident and has a bachelor's in business administration, and three children, one who recently graduated from Tingsborough High School, and two younger children in the school system, so she is eager to volunteer and give back to the community, we're recommending her for an appointment that will expire June 30, 2023.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Renee Herbert to the Town Education Fund Committee for a term effective immediately, and to expire on June 30, 2023.
Second. The motion is second, roll call vote, Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winistram.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 500. Next on the list, Appointments, Recreation and Parks Committee.
Great, unfortunately, we have three vacancies on this committee, but after this evening, we'll be down to two, Christine Wayrick, she noted that she enjoys contributing to activities that benefit the community, and she really admires the work of the Parks and Rec Committee, so we will be recommending her appointment for a two-year term, to expire June 30, 2024.
Thank you, any questions from the board? As Matt stated, there's two other positions available, as you have seen...
Next week, we received a letter of interest today.
Oh, we may be down to one, who is going to be the lucky person, you know, this is a group that does a lot of work in town, as you've seen, you know, about where they have a party at the end of the month, and they put that on, they put on so many different events, very active, and a fun group of people, so, anybody else interested, please contact Shannon. Okay, Recreation and Parks Committee, can I, any other questions from the board? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Christine Wayrick to the Recreation and Parks Committee for a term effective immediately, and to expire on June 30, 2024.
Second. The motion is second, roll call vote, Selectman Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
In favor.
Selectwoman Winistram.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, that passes 500. Highway Department, skilled laborer.
Okay, apologies to the city of Nashua, we're poaching one of theirs, we poach Nashua often, or New Hampshire often, we are going to be recommending the appointment of Jacob Kuttu to the Highway Department for a skilled laborer position, he currently works, as I mentioned, in the Streets Department in the city of Nashua, he holds a Class B license, and an active DOT card, he has experience with winter plowing, road repairs, and landscaping, he's driven various commercial vehicles, and operated warehouse equipment, his former supervisor spoke very highly of him, and recommended him as a very qualified candidate, the rate for skilled labor is 28, 22 per hour, it's full-time 40 hours per week, he would be available to begin on Monday, August 15, 2022, and Jacob does live in town, and he was actually, he bumped into a former highway employee who noticed his shirt with Nashua, and just happened to casually mention that Tingsborough was hiring, and he applied, so we got very lucky how that worked out, so...
Any questions from the board? Is this, is this the new position that we opened up?
Yes.
So, the Highway Department will be fully staffed.
One up.
Fully staffed for now, as Jimmy Hustons has been informing me, in 1999, they actually had one more, one more employee than they currently do now, even with this one, so...
Right, we're still down one.
That's something that we're going to be looking at, when we look at the DPW, which I've asked Matt to, you know, give us a good presentation, it's one of our goals for next meeting, so, any other questions about skilled labor? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Jacob Kuttu to the position of highway skilled laborer at the rate of 2822 an hour, with a start date of Monday, August 15, 2022.
Second. I have a motion, and a second, just so everybody knows, Selectwoman Winistram had a, you know, had a, had some work to do tonight, starting at 7:30, we thank her for joining us for the first hour and a half, but now, since she's not on, I don't have to do a roll call vote, so... roll call vote, so. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes 4-0-0. Thank you. Selectman's report, where are we there?
Yeah.
Selectman Moran, would you have a report tonight?
I do not have a report tonight, Chair.
You do not have a report tonight. Selectman Eldridge, do you have a report tonight?
The only thing to say is, I know the, the party by the bridge is looking for volunteers still, so these things don't happen without folks getting involved, you still will have plenty of time to enjoy yourself if you volunteer some time, so please contact, I think Allison is handling that, and I think Nick DiPisquali is coordinating, but please volunteer, please help out.
It's a great event, thank you. Selectwoman Calabocas, do you have your report tonight?
Just to expand on that, so everybody knows, and they have it in front of them, it's August 27, which is the last Saturday of the month, I believe.
Yes.
Beginning at 11, and then it goes all the way through the night when they end with